While the joint meeting to order. And we have all three members of the Board of Selectmen here. Mr. Pugliese is on his way, he's currently virtual.
And from planning, we have Jay Byard. Andy Sutton, Dennis Dula Merritt, Paul A. Kay, and Doug McCracken.
Okay, so I'll kick it off. This is an 824 referral to the Planning Commission from the Board of Selectmen. We are, I was talking to the chairman earlier and I thought the way it would work is the Board of Selectmen would defer this matter to the Planning Commission in the midst of this meeting. Because that's typically how it works, we refer something to you.
Just gonna hold on, see if there was something going on.
Yeah, you, you, it's good without the screen, like you don't have to have that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Last night we're defining it.
He can see everyone, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, they can see us also.
Okay, perfect. I'll try to fix it, sorry to interrupt.
No, I, we couldn't fix it last night, and so don't worry, Larry will be back tomorrow, so. You're good? Yeah.
Won't touch it, I won't throw it.
Karen, you're reporting and everything? Yeah, you're good, okay. So, um, so look, I mean, we all know the Dockin' Dine, former Dockin' Dine property has been, it's 13 years this October 27th. I think that's when Superstorm Tropical Storm Sandy hit. And that was the second demolition of the Dockin' Dine restaurant. And, you know, we've heard rumors over the years of people trying to either acquire the land or Mr. Kadama, the owner of the Point LLC, stating he was gonna rebuild, but obviously had to be FEMA compliant. And that meant an expensive build going up in the air and whatever. At this point, nothing's ever happened, so. About a year ago, the idea started being batted around of perhaps, look, this is, this piece of land that the Dockin' Dine sits on, this 2.2 acres, is probably one of the most prized pieces of land, you know, on the Connecticut shoreline. I don't want to go too much farther than that, but it's probably one of the most beautiful pieces right at the mouth of the river. And it's actually in the Park and Rec strategic plan, if they would ever be able to acquire it. They have plans for it, so. So we started batting around the idea of perhaps allowing Mr. Kadama, the Point LLC, to operate out of the, what is now the Duffy Pavilion. And those conversations occurred. The town planner was involved, a few other, not too many people were involved, but a few others were involved, economic development. And, you know, the deal, I, I won't go, I don't, I don't know how many, how much detail I should share with the various iterations of what was going on, but we've gotten to a point where I think conceptually, we have a I hate to even say a deal, but an agreement. The, the documents are still in draft form, and there are two documents. There's a purchase and sale agreement, and there is a lease agreement, a land lease. So basically, the agreement is the town would own, would receive in fee, fee simple, we would own it forever, the 2.2 acres. The Duffy Pavilion building itself would be transferred to Mr. Kadama on a land lease. So we would still own the land underneath the building. One of the hangups for a little while was, well, what if the building gets destroyed? I've now given you a $3 million piece of property and I have nothing, because I have to go up the neater. And we were like, too bad. You know, there's a couple ways this could go down, and the towns that we looked into making the building historical, but we're not gonna spin our wheels doing that if at some point the owner of the building chooses to go that route, that's different. So we got to a point where, based on the historical damage that has been done to that building over the course of the last 20 years, he is interested enough in this agreement that he said, I'll take the risk of that. So that is the concept. I had about an hour-long meeting with our attorney who's helping us draft the documents yesterday. And the agreement and the lease will be revised to reflect the fact that it's a transfer, gets the building, we have, we still own the land. And there's no guarantees that that building will be standing. I mean, Chris, am I right, even if there was a fire and it was destroyed?
Would have to be FEMA compliant for the reconstruction.
Yeah, so there's risk associated with it. And, and then there are some provisions in there, and maybe not for this Planning Commission, but I mean, I'm certainly willing to share. The building would have to be rebuilt, you know, within two years, or plan submitted within two years, but what, the way we're phrasing it is it cannot remain damaged or not operable as a restaurant for up to three years. Otherwise, it reverts, so we can't have, what we're trying to avoid is a similar situation. And we changed, the language, some of the language has been changed from when you've seen it too, because we don't, we don't have to go into that. So basically, we've simplified this. Casual dining restaurant is the use, there'd still be a zoning approval. And, and then, of course, the town takes over a mess of a property, that's what it is. It's probably, probably needs, I'm guessing, at least a million dollars worth of care. And if we want to do with it, what we really want to do with it, the number's probably north of that. So that's what the sandbar used to look like, everybody, anybody who'd like to see it, you may, it's the old sandbar, right there. So what we've done is we've brought up a few renderings of what we might consider this property to look like. I'm gonna actually bring up the needs here. So what we would hope to do is have an open-air pavilion on this property. So this would be the pavilion looking north here, so College Street is over here, and obviously you see the water. So that's the idea, is to have some sort of open-air pavilion on that property. Chris and I have talked about perhaps trying at some point making it a three-season, because there's no sugarcoating what we're losing in the Duffy Pavilion. We're losing community space that is irreplaceable, okay? Let's just say it, I mean, it is not, it is unlike any other community space anywhere, I'd imagine. And there is no obvious replacement for that space. You know, I could talk about the library's doing a renovation, and the library's gonna have extra rooms. We can talk about, you know, the estuary is willing to do a lot more rentals, they're, they're, they like to make money, and they have a beautiful, the estuary has a beautiful room that can be rented for similar price to the Duffy Pavilion, so. There are possibly some other options, but they're not, they're not the Duffy Pavilion. So how do we provide that? It's going to be a little bit of catch-as-catch-can, I'm not promising anything, but the idea would be to perhaps have three-season space that our residents could use, and maybe with the library renovation, some other space, and maybe in town, some other space becomes available. So the Board of Selectmen has talked about this quite a bit in executive session. We took it to Park and Rec last week or two weeks ago. And we had taken it to Park and Rec a couple months before that, Park and Rec considered it, discussed it, didn't move on it, and they did move on it two weeks ago, and it was unanimously recommended to allow, the way the motion was phrased, to allow the First Selectmen to continue the negotiations with the goal of having this agreement in place whereby the sandbar, the Dockin' Dine, would be at the Duffy Pavilion, and the town would acquire this property. I did have an informal conversation with Economic Development, it's certainly something they're interested in, in a big way. They've always been interested in this piece of land. And now we're before the Planning Commission. And let me lay out a little bit of the road ahead. The road ahead is a public hearing, so ultimately, ultimately, this needs to be voted on by the public, okay? This is not a Board of Selectmen decision, this is not Board of Selectmen saying we have to do this to revitalize Sabre Point. I happen to think it's a win-win, we get casual dining, and we get a 2.2-acre waterfront park that is contiguous with other town properties at Gardener's Landing and Fort Sabre Monument Park. So the road ahead, assuming the Board of Selectmen recommends the 824 tonight, and the Planning Commission takes it up tonight, is to a public hearing on April 30th at 6:30 at the middle school. So we've reserved the middle school, press release, assuming positive action tonight, a press release will go out soon. And this is all about the public and listening to their concerns. You know, look, I, we can do a casual poll, and we can say, yeah, it seems like there's a good feel about this. But ultimately, it will come down to either vote at a town meeting or a referendum. I'm not sure how we will do that. You know, we all just saw what happened in Guilford, where they had too many people for, they acquired the Mooreing, the old Mooreing Restaurant property for, I think, over $3 million. And, you know, you can argue that this piece is similar, it doesn't have a building on it, but. And they had over 900 people packed in an auditorium, I don't know that we want this situation. Sometimes it's easier just to put it to the machine vote and let people choose, like we've done with other items. So it would be a discussion on April 30th and beyond that, if need be. With ultimately getting to a, probably a machine vote. The Duffy Pavilion is booked six months in advance, I'm going to a party there in July, you know, rehearsal dinner, like you all have, same thing. And so this doesn't happen, in theory, probably until the winter of '25, '26, and then we move on it from there. That is the outline, Chris, do you want to add, what am I missing, I'm probably?
I think you've covered it, at some point, I think we should just do a little roll call, so those watching know who's present from the different boards and commissions.
I thought we did that in the beginning.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I, we just said that again it wasn't here, but I don't think we went around the room.
Yeah, we did.
No.
Well, yeah, we did, yes.
Maybe I have a thinking the copies.
You might have.
Yeah. So we did do that, so. What I, I, the way the agenda is written tonight is that the Board of Selectmen must refer the 824 to the Planning Commission within the, within the context of this meeting, so. I'm gonna, just for discussion purposes, put that on the table, I'll make a motion through a second, second by Mr. Pugliese, so. Any, any further comment, you'll, obviously, there'll be further opportunity to comment within the meeting, but there isn't, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and that is, as stated in the memorandum to the Planning Commission. So, and that is to, actually, you have it right here?
The memo.
Yeah. Well, it's an 824 referral, which is the Planning Commission did receive, stating why the Board of Selectmen feels like it's a good idea to proceed towards this, so. There are other pictures, there's summer picture, and there are other pictures, you know, the Economic Development Director would like to see some public art in this area, there's, the only structure would be an open-air pavilion, if it's allowed, we need to figure, you know, Chris, we have our zoning enforcement officer here, so with her input. This is in, I believe, the northwest corner of the property, towards the road, so is it more than 100 feet away from the waterfront? Or does that not matter?
Loads of different things, we have a Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone, which is the 100 feet, but it may be considered already a developed area. You've got flood regulations, but an open-air pavilion where water can go in and out if it's built properly is something that can be permitted, and there'll be a little bit of complication here and there for permitting, but I think there's a lot of possibilities for the property.
Yeah, so I'm happy to, so here we are, and it's been referred to the Planning Commission, and I have four of those, I did look at the, just a couple very minor things. I did look at the deed today, whereby the town took ownership of the Duffy Pavilion, there are no restrictions on it that would preclude the use of it returning to a restaurant. And on the recommendation of someone who is involved in the agreement that, between the Point LLC and the town, I did reach out to the Duffy family. And they are, they are interested in seeing, you know, the, the quote was basically, Vicky Duffy always loved open space, and there's nothing that would make her happier than acquiring that open space. I didn't make any promises, because it would be a Park and Rec decision, but obviously we have a Duffy Pavilion, if a Duffy Pavilion, if another pavilion is built, it should remain that. And if not, maybe it's Duffy Park, I don't know, but I just want this board to know that there are some other minor matters involved in this that have been considered, so.
Okay, with that, the Planning Commission has received the memo, and item B is the request for consideration from us and determine if it's consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Carl has provided us with a couple of instances where it is right in line with the plan. Sorry. I think that's.
Yeah. You know, one thing, I don't even know if I stressed it enough, is public access to the water. I mean, from both, you know, the national state and the local level, this is what this does. It allows people to come to the waterfront and enjoy it at no cost. Now, if they have to buy a hot dog, you know, that's different, but the idea would also be to, there's a deck there that the town would ultimately hopefully repair, so that people can, you know, enjoy the water view. So I did, I mean, that's probably primary in all this, and of course, and I can't stop talking. As you know, that we are, we have a Trails grant, so we are, this falls right in line with that. We have Trails grant, where we'll be building a sidewalk from Gardener's Landing, and that will go all the way basically to Fenwick. So it's part of a, a river walk almost, so there's just some really great opportunity here. And I, I believe that's why Park and Rec endorsed it, for Selectmen, Economic Development, and now you, and then it would move for, I want to stress it, public discussion, I do want to stress that.
So if I get a motion to?
Can we ask questions?
Okay, normally I would put a motion, then ask questions, but go ahead.
Okay.
It's following Robert's rules of orders. So I'd like a motion to approve this request of municipal improvement for 824 for the land acquisition, 145 College Street, in exchange for building lease at 155 College Street. It's in line with the Plan of Conservation and Development, specifically National, Natural Resources Policy 2, connecting people with natural resources, and Economic Development Policy 1F, strengthen the town's business sector. Now I'll open it up. Yeah, you can second, yes, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. So this, this might be a, from the Plan of Conservation and Development, just a couple of questions, maybe it's a tune-up for the public name. So the length of the lease for the pavilion is that?
Is, so the idea would be that as long as it's being operated, it's almost in perpetuity, it's 25-year leases that are renewable at the option of the less seen.
Okay, so he can hand it off to multiple generations?
With the consent of the landlord, which shall not be unreasonably withheld.
Okay, that sounds very legal.
Yeah, it is legal length, and we've all seen it in a contract, yes.
Are they able to sublease the place, or are they able, they have to own it?
There's nothing in there about subletting. Let me make a note of that, so, you know.
Yeah, and if God forbid, for some, this gentleman passes, what happens?
It, it is in agreement to his Arizona severance.
Okay.
But it does have to be operated as a casual dining restaurant.
Okay, I understand. And, and is he responsible for renovations to make it a restaurant?
Yes, in the interior, yes.
And does it have to be FEMA compliant?
So right now, we're gonna work on the flood permitting, so you can take 50% of the structure value, some of the existing finishes, I think, are gonna have to remain. We're gonna have to be creative, so, for example, a walk-in cooler, maybe it'll be on wheels, and it'll put in a location so that it can be removed in the event of a storm, you know, as well as potentially, and we haven't gotten that far into, you know, the discussions of retrofitting. But Mr. Kadama and his team think they can make it work with the numbers, and.
Yeah, and one other thing, it's not just the, you say it's the area under the awning, and also leasing him the space even to the north of that, where there are several parking spaces for outdoor dining. So want to be clear on that too, I guess that's the only way you get to the numbers.
What happens, or let me ask it this way, can he sell the restaurant? The business?
Sell the business? So that would be, it, it doesn't have to stay in the family, okay, yeah, it's not, it's a lease that. But again, we do, I was talking to a lawyer about that yesterday, we do have some control over who we might want there.
Okay.
So there is some control, but not unlimited.
Paul?
Mr. Vertuna, do you have any idea, have you gotten any appraisal sense of what the two properties are?
So the land as it sits right now is about a 2 mil, the 155, the former Dockin' Dine, or the Dockin' Dine property is about 2 million. And the building here is about 400,000, the, I, I checked with Bridget today, 397.
Well, that's 397 existing, not as a restaurant though, right?
I can say again, Jay.
If, that's, that's 375 existing as building now, but not as a restaurant, if a restaurant was there.
It would be a pretty significant amount, and pay taxes, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Oh, okay. How did the town acquire the property, or was it a donated piece of property, did the town buy it originally?
Yes, the town did buy, the town bought the property, there was a mini golf fair when the sandbar was there. And so the town bought all that. The sandbar, which, in fact, it's in the deep, and the property includes the sandbar and the miniature golf course. And that was under Barbara Maynard.
Alcohol sales down there?
Yep. So, good question, I called our, the town's insurance carrier today to kind of put that to them and say, what kind of insurances? So we're not in the building, we're just on the way, so inevitably, there will be some sort of whole harmless indemnification, but also probably some sort of insurance of some sort, but yes, and certainly, he would have to demonstrate to us on yearly basis that his insurances are current and had that conversation today, I thought about that, because, well, and here's another question, so Park and Rec does not allow alcohol on their facilities, okay? But, and this, I don't know who this is a question for. The Vicky Duffy Pavilion is currently a Park and Rec facility. Once it is no longer the Vicky Duffy Pavilion, and is used as a private enterprise, is that entire area a Park and Rec facility anymore? I don't know if it's specifically designated in an ordinance or a regulation, or if it just is, and that would be a simple change, I would think, that it is no longer a Park and Rec facility, but over here is now a Park and Rec facility, so I know there are some Park and Rec folks here, they may have some insight into that, but that was a conversation I had yesterday with the attorney. So, and, and the insurance agent today, because clearly there has to be alcohol sales, you know, for a restaurant.
I have a question on the agenda, it seems deliberate, it says Sabre Point, in quotes, acquisition of 145 College Street, so is that the town of Old Sabre?
Not sure.
I didn't know if that's like a, a new legal name?
No, so what I did was, I actually put together the agenda, so that, you know, how every application will say McCracken, application for new subdivision, it just, I just, Saber Point made the most sense, since it is Saber Point, so there was no, it was just calling it Saber Point versus trying to say the Pavilion Dockin' Dine, I thought it was just a little cleaner.
Any other questions, comments?
A couple of questions, this first one is maybe a little tart to borrow upfront, but on the open space, which looks beautiful, and I, and I think is a, is a great use of that area, I really agree with that. Do we envision actual water access?
Not there.
Okay, great, so more like.
There are, there are docks that are in very bad condition.
Yep, yep.
I will tell you, that's not a priority of the town to fix, there'll be money spent elsewhere before we spend money on docks. But they are, they do exist, and I, I find it hard to believe that if we did want to fix them and use them at some point, that DEEP would have a hard time with that, I, I imagine that that would be encouraging. So water access, yes, but that is not the town's priority.
Right, well, I'm just thinking, so boat access is one thing, people climbing over the rails, or wanting to climb down, and then, of course, fishing, which happens there all the time.
We we're, if, we want to create a fishing pier out there, we definitely want that, and, and maybe not boat docks, but maybe a fishing pier for certain. Making that area safe is gonna be a challenge, as we all know, but I think before boating, a fishing pier would be any priority of the town.
I'd, I'd agree with that, I mean, you have the marina right there, absolutely, and then, thank you. And then, secondarily, I, I think you really rightly point out that the community does use and enjoy the existing pavilion. And, you know, I was pleased that you noted that right away, and the community might like to see some more defined ideas as to how that space can be replaced, not in terms of its beautiful view and all that stuff, but the, the activities that happen there now.
The functionality.
Yeah, the functionality, right.
Yeah, my, my only concern with that is I, I don't want people to draw a parallel with the view, you know?
Right, yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
And that's the danger of, as I see, and I've gone back and forth on this, and I've avoided that very issue, because I'm concerned when, when I say, you know, the fire department has a room that people can use for activities. That, there's, it's, it doesn't, you know, that, that's gonna draw anger more than, you know, anything else, so. I think being upfront and saying the town will do everything it can to provide some space.